We'll go ahead and get started. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. If you could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And I promise I won't mute myself this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Start out with a number of announcements this evening. I would like to excuse Mary Ann Stanton from this evening's meeting. Mary Ann was not able to join us, so she is excused. The board did meet an executive session last evening, June 10th, for approximately two hours to discuss a personnel matter as well as the contractual administrators' compensation. We also met an executive session prior to this evening's meeting for one hour to fulfill the requirement of the Act 44 Safe Schools Report presented to the board prior to June 30th. So we did that tonight to meet that deadline. We were also presented with the PAYS survey results that we had participated in. So we did receive those two presentations this evening. We met for about an hour. I would also like to entertain a motion from the board to add an agenda item at the end of our voting this evening to add the Proposed Athletics Health and Safety Plan. Since that came to us late in the day today due to the timing of everything happening, we would like to add in an item agenda this evening if the board would entertain that. So if there's a motion to add the Athletics Health and Safety Plan to the meeting, we can circle back to that at the end of the board action as our final item. So is there a motion to add that item?
So moved.
Moved by a whole bunch of people. Dr. Zimmerman, I believe, and seconded by Mr. Rowe. Is that right?
Yes.
All in favor of adding the item agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. We will add that agenda item, like I said, at the end of the board action as our final item. That completes the announcement section. We'll move on to citizens' comments to the board on agenda items. At this time, if there's any citizen who would like to make a comment to the board on any agenda items, this would be the time.
Okay. First up, we have Tina Rowant. Tina, go ahead. You can...
Tina, if you wouldn't mind starting, if you could state your name and address and also which agenda item you'll be commenting on, that'd be great.
Okay. My name is Tina. My last name is Rowant. P is in Peter, R-O-W-A-N-T. I live at 1420 Jefferson Avenue in Lewisburg. And, well, let's see. I have a couple of questions, and it's mainly on the budget. About how much the budget is for every year approximately. And, okay, so let me start, if it's okay. I did get the email from, let me see, from John Fairchild. And a couple of questions. He said that the budget really won't change much. You guys really don't know as of yet. But he said you still fed the kids and you still had the cafeteria workers working. Okay. I know when my boys were in school, you fed the kids breakfast and lunch. So you're telling me all these kids at all the schools were fed breakfast and lunch? No, right?
We made breakfast and lunch meals available to all students and parents who wanted it. So any students who wanted breakfast and lunch, we provided multiple deliveries to various sites and at our buildings available for all the students, any who came.
Okay. And did you take note, or do you have a number of how many kids you did end up feeding?
I know we served over 30,000 meals.
And that was over the total timeframe of the three months?
Of the shutdown, yes, ma'am.
And how many do you normally serve on a daily basis if we were to divide that 30,000?
I'd have to look. It would vary from day to day, but we would serve anywhere from six... I'd probably say about 500 to 600 meals per day.
Okay. And that's throughout all the schools?
Yes, that was during the shutdown. That was across all the locations.
Okay, so you're saying that's how many it normally would be on a regular school day when the kids were in school?
No, no, ma'am. Again, it would vary depending on which students brought their lunches. Unfortunately, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I do know that we feed quite a few kids. Possibly, I want to say maybe half or more each day, so, you know.
Okay. Did you still have the part-time people working?
Tina, I'm going to jump in here. So normally, this section of the meeting is the board's opportunity to listen to the community. We normally don't do a lot of question and answer right now. I mean, we can certainly, I'm happy to follow up with an email, or Dr. Fairchild, I'm sure would be happy to follow up to answer any questions. Normally, at this point in the meeting, we are, you know, we're all ears right now. You know, we would welcome any comments to the board, but we typically don't do a lot of question and answer at this part in the meeting, just to, you know, in efforts to try to keep things moving. So, again, certainly not to cut you off, we would certainly like to answer any questions, but at this point in the meeting, we normally just are here to listen to any citizens' comments to the board to take into consideration.
Okay. Then, one comment. Okay, EBT. We have a surplus of $2 or $3 million, and they are giving us, as you saw in the paper, 20% back of our taxes because of the pandemic, because of how many people are hurting, how many people were on unemployment or didn't have a job, all the businesses downtown that weren't open. And a lot of those people live here in EBT. Are you considering at all giving any rebate or any percentage off of the school taxes for this year since a lot of the people are hurting? Have you considered that?
So I will just say, as a blanket statement, the board has taken that into consideration, I mean, to great lengths. In, I think, every single meeting since March, we've all stated our great concern. We've definitely revised some of our thinking, even hiring. Right now, we've kind of tried to really prioritize what can we do without right now. We have voted unanimously to do a 0% tax increase. The only other thing I'd like to point out is that the Pennsylvania state legislation had required school districts across the state to continue to pay our employees. So even though, you know, we did continue to educate remotely, all of our employees did continue to receive compensation per state. That was not something that we had any say in or any other district. That is something that we did have to continue to pay our employees. So, yes, we've talked to, at great lengths over the past several months to do our absolute best to kind of tighten up the belt. That's why you see a 0% tax increase in front of you this evening.
Well, and as with EBT, we haven't raised taxes in the last three years, but they're still giving us that rebate if we want it this year because of the pandemic. Okay. I see, well, the guy that sent me the email said that the school district has $6 million?
But, Ms. Rowant, as I mentioned in the email, the reserves are a snapshot in time. It's not what we currently have in the checking account right now. It is just a snapshot in time as of June 30th of last year. So, again, it continues to change on a daily basis, much like with your own personal checking account. When you write a check to cover your electric bill or to pay the water bill, the balance fluctuates up and down.
Right. It'll go up once you get all of our taxes. I got that. So now, the budget for this year. How much? What is the difference between this past year and this year that you guys would be spending? Is it still the same, or is it more for this coming school year?
Again, Tina, I would encourage you, if you have more questions, to reach out to us via email or phone. Again, at this point in the meeting, this is a time that we typically do not do a lot of question and answer, as I stated previously. So if you have any additional comments, you know, we can certainly listen to those, but at this point, I would definitely continue the dialogue. If you'd like us to phone call or an email from any of our staff, we're happy to do that. We typically don't do that at this part in a meeting, though. So if there's any other comments that you'd like to make before we move on, now's the time.
Is the press on Zoom?
Yes, I believe Mr. Fairan from the Standard Journal is on.
Okay, so at least some stuff will get posted in the paper then. Okay, that's it for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Matt Schumacher is the next one.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Hey, then, I heard what Jordan said, so I'll just, I also have questions. So, Jordan, someone, one of you people can email me a response whenever you guys get the time. I have two questions. One would be, are you guys going to move the due date out for taxes as have been moved throughout the state so that you give people who have issues with finances more time to gather funds to pay their school taxes? That's question one. And question two is, very similar, I guess, to Tina's, was, obviously, we missed the whole third marking period, and I understand the food service and you had to pay everyone, but I guess I'd like an analysis of the money saved without the athletics, without the busing, without the utilities. I know you used some utilities, of course, but the power had to be much lower, the sewer, the water. So I'd just like to see some type of analysis. I understand you guys are doing a zero tax increase, but that's for next year. This year, the citizens in the state gave you $36 million to spend on this year, and we basically negated all of the third marking period. So there's got to be some sort of savings somewhere in there, because if someone tells me there's not a savings, then what's the point of school?
There will be, Mr. Schumacher, there will be some savings. Something you should be aware of is Act 13 of 2020, the one that mandated we continue to pay our employees. Also mandated that we continue to pay our bus company. So that was put in there so that the mom-and-pop bus operations around the state would not go bankrupt and lose their drivers for this upcoming year. So, yes, there will be some savings from the utilities, et cetera. But again, we'll know more about that after the fiscal year ends on June 30th and that we perform our analysis, and then we'll see where it comes in from there.
Okay, I appreciate it. Yeah, just want to know if they're going to push the tax due date out further to give people more time to get the money, you know, the people that are in troubled times. I appreciate all you do, and thanks for not raising our taxes. I'll talk to you guys later.
Thanks, Matt. All right. Any other citizens that would like to address the board on any agenda items?
I'm not seeing any other hands.
All right, then we will move on to board action. The first item, Dr. Fairchild, I'll turn it back to you for the final 2020-2021 budget.
Yes. I would ask that you vote to adopt the 2020-2021 budget as presented with expenditures of a little over $36 million and zero property tax increase.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? One final piece. In addition, I know we did state this. I actually just had a conversation today with an employee of, an administrator of another district. This is not something that is just with Lewisburg. You know, the state legislation, in addition to contracts that we still had to, you know, still had to comply with, that is where some of the budget for next year as well as the budget for this past year. There are some other, you know, factors that unfortunately the state legislation had said that school districts continue to do. So, again, we did take a look at all of that, looking at next year's budget as well. And, you know, we've done our best to really, you know, to kind of pinch pennies as much as we can for the 2020-2021 budget. So I do think that this is a budget that, you know, I'm very happy with the 0% increase, and I think that all of the community can, would probably agree with that as well. So, hearing no other comments, I will do a roll call vote, please, Paula.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. John, back to you for the 2020-21 Tax Levy Resolution.
Yes. Someone would ask that you adopt the Tax Levy Resolution setting the mileage at 17.71, which is the same rate as last year.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on. John, back to you for the Homestead/Farmstead Resolution.
Yes, I would ask that you adopt the Homestead/Farmstead Resolution as presented so that we can take advantage of these state funds and lower our property taxes accordingly.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Paula.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, moving on to the Maintenance and Repair Technology Fee Waiver for this upcoming academic year. Mrs. Moser?
Thank you. I gave you the summary document of the history of the tech fee, the challenges as the students now have their devices. We have sufficient funding in the budget for the repair of devices. We're looking at asking the board to waive the fee for the coming school year and are able to continue to work, provide devices, accomplish repairs, et cetera.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Again, I would just draw, just in response to some of the comments that we did receive, this is one of the actions the board chose to take to waive the fee. It is a $25 fee that we're waiving. Again, with the times, we acknowledge that, you know, these are certainly economically challenging times for many people. So this is just one way that we were able to try to help families with those costs. So, again, I would just like to draw that attention to this motion. So, we have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? All right. Roll call, please, Paula.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Fetzer?
Yes.
Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right. Dr. Fairchild, I'll turn it back to you for the Employee Assistance Program Plan.
Yes. As we discussed last time, one of the things we're looking at is implementing an employee assistance program, especially during the trying times that we have. And we believe that the GO Plan from Mizzie &amp; Sullivan at a cost of $15.95 per employee per year would be the best value for the school district. So we would ask that you approve this this evening, and we will work to implement it in the near future.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. I think another one, but I'll give it to Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Paula.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Brousse?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll move on to the board action under new business, the Act 93 Compensation Plan. Dr. Jablonski, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, this was the agreement for our Act 93 administrators, so I'd welcome a motion to approve it tonight.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brousse, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion?
I just want to express incredible gratitude to our Act 93 administrators. The end of this year was not easy, and everything from delivering meals, which you know I felt was to taking care of, making sure kids were being in contact, and we know that the fall could be just crazy. So, thank you. Hopefully not more crazy.
All right. Roll call, please, Paula.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item is the Contractual Administrators' Compensation. Board in front of you tonight, you have the numbers for the contractual administrators' compensation. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Mr. Heath. Any discussion?
Same expression of gratitude. Thank you.
Roll call, please, Paula.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Onsinger-Fossero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brousse?
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yeah.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the last item under the board action is the added agenda item. Once again, the Proposed Athletics Health and Safety Plan. Mrs. Moser, Ms. Reber, if one of you guys would like to introduce the motion?
We're asking, basically, the PDE just put out the guidelines yesterday of the Return to Play Protocols, which includes an Athletic Health and Safety Plan as the first step. We are asking that the board approves that this evening, but with, there is a template that is going to be forthcoming. We just don't know exactly what date that is, so that you would authorize administration to adjust the proposal according to the template, and then we can bring any changes that may occur because of that back to the board then for approval.
And board, as I stated at the beginning of the meeting, the reason for adding this this evening, after receiving this from PDE, if we wait two more weeks, we're just waiting that much longer to get the athletic programs up and running. We then have to post them on the website, so it's just a timelier fashion if we approve them this evening, you know, with the proposed, as it's proposed now. So is there a motion to approve the Athletics' Health and Safety Plan as presented?
So moved. Second.
Moved by Mrs. Brousse, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion?
I just have a question. The plan outlines different phases, and I wanted to know how we know when we move to a different phase.
That'll be determined by the point people, which will be Mr. Temple until the end of June, and then myself until the new athletic director is in place. So monitoring certainly through that screening, and if at any point that we see any increase in students being sick, looking at the state numbers, as well as whether our county should go back into yellow, would certainly all play a factor in all of that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. We can do this by voice vote. There's no money involved in this, so we can do this by voice vote. All in favor of approving this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the board information section of the meeting. The first item is the 2020-2021 Board Planning Calendar. Sorry. You guys have this in front of you. There were a couple slight changes, just as we've talked over the past couple months.
Do you want to fold up? There you go.
Any questions about this? You know, take a look at it. You guys do have it in front of you. Again, if there's other things, we did sit down and shipped a couple things, again, per recommendation from the administrators, again, looking over. This is our standard timeline, but occasionally we do make some changes. So if the board has any questions, recommendations, administrators, if there's any other recommendations that might make planning purposes easier for you guys, certainly take a look at this and reach out. This will come back up at our next board meeting. So if there's any questions, certainly reach out between now and then. Moving on to the board president's report. I will skip this this evening. Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you for the Assistant Superintendent's report.
All right. My report is also oral tonight as a All right, my report is also oral tonight as opposed to a written one that you would have received in advance. I'll just play off of your decision to help us post the Athletic Health and Safety Plan. Likewise, the district must write the PDE plan for how we're gonna come back to school, and that's a more involved process, but we are underway and starting to have some early discussions, and certainly working hard to figure out exactly all the pieces that we need to be thinking about. It'll be a busy June as we continue to plan for return to school. I appreciate and I'll express gratitude on behalf of the administration for moving quickly tonight with the Athletic Safety Plan. Again, it feels good to put some pieces in place, to be putting some parts of our school programming and organization back into operation. I appreciate that very much. Thanks, Mr. Fetzer.
All right, I will move on to Board Liaison and Committee Reports. Are there any reports from any of the committees that have met?
Policy Committee met on Monday for what might have been the shortest meeting ever in June, which is usually, as Mr. Rowe likes to call it, an extravaganza. You'll be seeing those on the next agenda.
Any other reports? All right, we will move on then for the Consent Agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to have pulled out and voted upon separately? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, please, Paula.
Dr. Jablonsky?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Dr. Unziger Fisero?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Fetzer?
Yes.
Heath?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, that completes the Consent Agenda. At this point, I will open the floor, as we've done previously, for any board member to jump in to, if there's any director's comments, for anybody to just jump in at this point. We're a quiet bunch tonight. All right, then at this point, I will move on to any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items. Is there any citizen who would like to? Any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items at this point?
There's a question in the chat asking about the plan for reopening schools, but we know that has to come from PDE and also follow CDC guidance, so forthcoming?
I would, Mrs. Moser, if you want to jump in, I would say, just because I've been a part of, I know just a very small amount of those discussions, the district is in the process of planning. The difficult thing is, we don't really know what to plan for. So we're planning for as many scenarios as we can possibly think of. Again, just waiting guidance from the state. As far as an exact date, Mrs. Moser, if you want to jump in, as Dr. Jablonsky said, it is forthcoming. We are in the process of planning. As everyone can imagine, there are a lot of details to consider.
And you capture the sentiment. We have in possession a template that we can begin to use to guide us. It is a local planning effort with a lot of layers of consideration. We have begun some early discussions, and it is, as I say, what a June is going to be filled with is the continued effort to try to stay as aware of the guidances and the suggestions, as well as factoring in the specifics of our local community and the contexts in which we operate. And we know everybody is most anxious to get the information, and we in turn want to do a very diligent job to come up with the best possible plans that we can, and then, yes, absolutely, share them out with our community is where we are.
Mrs. Moser, there was another question about, in what way the information would be shared?
I would say in as many ways as we look to share our information. Certainly, school board meeting, as it needs to have a board permission or a board approval, posting it in all our ways that we do, sharing it out through all our many methods that we have available to us for good communication. We'll certainly want to make use of all of those.
I would also encourage, you know, parents, community members to stay engaged, continue to monitor the website, continue to monitor emails. You know, as Mrs. Moser said, we do try to disseminate that information as much as possible via text, email, Facebook pages, website, you know, board meetings, all of those things. So please continue to monitor the website, continue to monitor even the board meeting agendas. Those are also on the website under School Board, so, you know, definitely stay tuned. We will get that information out as quickly and as vast and widespread as possible, you know, as we continue to plan and release that information. We'll try to get it out as quickly as possible.
I want to say, this person has said that they are new to the district, and to be in school messenger with all your various forms of communication. I think that John Fairchild can take that email, or maybe Mrs. Young could take that email.
And you can register online.
Yeah.
Yep. So, Mr. Farron, any questions?
Oh, hello. Hi, everybody. Good evening. This is Matt Farron, Standard Journal and 216 North Fifth Street, Lewisburg. A couple of questions for you. May I get the Act 93 report and the security report emailed to me at some point in the next day or so?
I can get you the Act 93. I cannot send you a security report. That's executive session.
Okay, all right. John, while I have you here, safe to say that your budget for the upcoming fiscal year, it's a projection, of course, of what you take in and what you spend. I mean, all this uncertainty, were there any, was there anything that was certain? I mean, other than it was a no-tax-increase budget, was there anything certain in this budget that you could provide me as a detail?
I can send you the detail of our budget via email, so you have that. Honestly, the only thing certain is the uncertainty. I know the state has level funded us for next year, so hopefully they can fulfill that promise. And we continue to wait for further direction from Harrisburg, as well as all sorts of other things. So unfortunately, it's just a time of great uncertainty. We've done our best to prognosticate with the budget, but again, we'll see what happens when July 1 rolls around.
Okay, are there any scenarios that would beg the budget to be reopened and perhaps discussed and approved again, or don't school districts do that?
It would be a very rare circumstance for us to reopen the budget. Now, of course, if something should happen to, say, our state funding, if something happens in Harrisburg, we would definitely address that, but I don't anticipate anything.
Okay, thank you, John. Now, for, I guess, Kathy and perhaps Paula, are there any details from the Health and Safety Plan for athletics? I mean, that you can give me outside of the template, such as, are there different plans for different sports, depending on, you know, how many people are involved, like, let's say, football versus golf and tennis? Just throwing out an example there.
Sure. Well, first of all, Matt, this is for primarily offseason and preseason, so it's only until August 10. So certainly the types of activities that student athletes are in during that time, but it addresses things like weight room lifting and how many students can be in a space, basic health protocols, and we'll have that, actually, now, it won't be up tomorrow, but we'll have that very soon on the website. That's one of the requirements. But I'd be happy if you want to talk later, I can give you some specifics or fill in on some of the details or direct you to where the state guidelines are too, because that's really the kind of the reference point of, that everyone of all of our local districts are using as a jumping-off point.
Okay, I was considering calling Mark Temple, maybe in the week ahead. He'll be your athletic director through the end of the month.
Yep.
And the new A.D., I had the name once, but I don't have it now?
No, we have not actually hired a new A.D. yet. Mr. Temple is retiring. He has retired from his teaching position, but he still is here serving in the A.D. capacity, and will be moving forward with filling that vacancy for the A.D. position soon.
All right, that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Matt.
Thanks, Matt. Any other comments to the board on, excuse me, on non-agenda items?
I'm not seeing any other hands, so thank you, everybody.
Okay, then I would move on to the Adjournment Section. Any, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Fisero, seconded by Dr. Jablonsky. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned.